I bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And send that we bless that wonderful name of Him that does things well. Send that we bless Him again for another day, another day's journey. And oh, trust you just say, "I'm glad about it." And send that we want to greet each one of you in the marvelous, majestic, messless name of Him, who still sits at the right hand of the Father. Send that to all of our New Hopeians and to all of our friends and family that shares with us during this time each week. Send that we are grateful for you and send that we bless you just for doing that. Now, suddenly, I want you to just take a quick moment to call or text inbox a family member, church member, and let them know that this weekly ministry here at the New Hope Baptist Church is on and that it would do them good not only today, but in the days to come. Send that we are praying for all of our sick bereaved families and send that those who going through seasonal difficulties and send that we are praying for those who behind jail and prison walls, those who are in rehabilitation and facilities, nursing homes, and send that those who at home who dealing with different types of sickness that diseases that got them at a disease. Send that we want you to know that you're not only you're in our thoughts, but you're also in our prayers. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we come just as we are empty our pitches before Fort Fountain. God, we come and ask that Thou would look on us again with our pity, our mercy, our compassion. Lord, we confess our sins that ye ever before us. Ask that Thou would just blot them out, God. We confess that we have fallen short, that we have done things contrary to your will and to your word. Ask, God, you forgive us now. Oh, God, you said in your word that we confess that you are still faithful and that you are still just. Do for us, God, what we are unable to do for ourselves. Our faith continue to look up to thee. And that, God, we praying now that thou would just look on us. Now, thank you again for this privilege of being able to talk to you. And God, you did told us that whenever we need you, that we can just call on you. God, we calling on you not because you are a God that is hard of hearing, not that you's a God that they don't already know what our needs are. But, God, we just know that you told us we can do it and we just calling you this day, God, asking that thou would remember us, that thou would have mercy on us, that thou would just have thy way. God, we just calling on you because we have not been able to find anybody else that can do us any, any good like you. God, use our strength. You are our hope. You are our refuge. Use our fortress. And, God, we just pray right now that thou would not leave us and thou would not forsake us. Oh, God, we, we know that there's so much going on in our land. God, we knowing that dealing with the stress, dealing with the trouble, dealing with the anxiety, dealing with the ups and downs, dealing with the bustles and the hustles of this world. God, sometime it overwhelms us. But, God, we just thank you that you have not forsaken us, that you have not turned away from us, that you are still there. And, God, we just praying for help. We just begging, God, that thou would just help us. And thank you for sending us our help, our friend, the Holy Spirit. God, pray that you just continue to cover us, continue to walk with us on this teasure journey. And, God, we just thank you that we are not in this by ourselves. You are our strength. Thank you for being our strength. And that, God, you did say you are our light and our salvation. We don't have anything to fear. And, God, because you is the strength of our life. Thank you, that, God, for being that light in darkness areas in our lives. Bless us now, God, those who going through seasonal sickness, bereavement, just going through the every day of challenges of life. And, that, God, I just pray that you would just speak comfort, speak healing, God, because we know that it's in the blood of your Son Jesus that we got the power, that we got the victory, that there is life. And, God, we just thank you for the gift that you so gave to us, undeserving creatures like we, God. We just thank you for the gift of just being saved. Thank you, that, God, for the gift of restoration. Bless us now. And we'll bless you back. We praying for our entire church family, God. We praying for the, the whole body of Christ, God. We lift them up now before God. We praying for our world, our country, praying for our state, our city. God, we praying for our kind. And, God, just move, continue to bless, meet the needs of your people not only financially, but spiritually, oh, God. Bless now, God. Bless now. Oh, God, just bless. If you bless, things will be well. God, if you just look, everything we be able to make it. Bless us now. God, we ask now that you come in oppression of the Holy Spirit. Come now, touch our spiritually ears that we can be able to hear, our eyes that we can see, our hearts that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now that you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in our sight. Oh, Lord, my rock and my redeemer. In Jesus the Christ's name we ask it all. Amen. All right. God bless your heart. Thank you so kindly. I know you got your Bible's already turned to James chapter 2. James chapter 2. We dealing with the three kinds called faith. We dealt with dead faith. That's covering verses 14 through 17. That's dead faith. Then we dealt with, last week, we dealt with demonic faith. That's verses 18 through verse 19, dealing with demonic, demonic faith. That's once again that we dealt with that on, on last week in James chapter 2. And so today, we want to look at James chapter 2, verses 20 through 26. Okay? We did, we want to deal with dynamic faith. Okay? We dealing with the three kinds of faith. Dead faith. And we know that dead faith entails that of, of just having the knowledge of God. And, and that's, 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 that's really totally it. It's just having the knowledge has no kind of life. And then we dealt with demonic faith that goes a little bit farther. It is that it has to do with emotion. It has to do with our intellect. Having the ability of, of knowledge, of knowing what God requires. But still, we dealt with that even the devil, even the demons knows the word. Matter of fact, the sad indictment upon it is that the demons takes a little bit when it comes to God is that they have so much faith in, in, in God and in the word of God that they, that they do something that a whole lot of believers don't even do. Is that the demons at least fear God. And you have, you have some that are a part of the household of faith that don't even fear, fear God. And so, so, so you have demonic, you have demons of faith is that they just believe on the intellect that they, 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 their faith has no deeds. Their faith has no, no love in it. Is that they don't believe that they can be saved, that they have no saving faith. Okay? So let's look at dynamic, dynamic faith. That, that's, that's, that's a faith that motivates. That's a faith that, that deals with the total of mankind, that deals with our stability, that deals with our development. It is, it's that kind of faith that is real. It has power. Comes from that word, dunamus, dynamite. That's what Jesus said in the second chapter of Acts. No, the first chapter of Acts, when he says to his disciple, "Go into Jerusalem, go into Galilee, and ye shall receive power." That, that word, power, comes from the Greek word, the dunamus, that where we get the, the Greek, the English word, dynamite. And you know what dynamite is? It's dealing with explosive, to say things, or dealing with power. And so when we, when we look at that word, dynamite, is that we're talking about power, talking about faith that is actually being manifest in what pastor? I'm glad you asked. And, and a changed life. Okay? And a changed life. And so, once, once, once our life have been changed, once there's been a transformation in our, in our lives that has occurred, then we have to, we have to, we have to put that faith into, into action. And, and keep in mind, and I don't want to, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but it's very important for us to understand this kind of faith that, 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 that James is actually talking about. And I don't, I don't want, I just want to refresh our, our mind about what we said about, we love, I love how Paul and James make a comparison as they both teaching about this subject of faith. And, and when you remember, we said, we said that Paul talks about a faith, dealing with his audience, and especially in the church in Ephesus. And, and he talks about them have to deal with the subject of, since they have been, since, since they are saved, is that, is that many of those believers in Ephesus was seeking to be justified by God just by works. They felt like their works was good enough. And they, 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 they were stuck there on that, on that belief that in that second chapter of Ephesians, when you start reading verse 8 through 10, is that they felt like they, they could earn their salvation just by being good. And, and you'll be surprised of the people, even in our neighborhood, even in our community, even in, in the church house, who feel that they can earn their salvation just by being good. All of us got some good neighbors, got some good relatives, got, got, got some good friends, but they have not accepted. The reality of it is, is that, is that being good is not enough. Okay? Okay? Cause, cause he said, Paul and James all of the point that when it dealing with faith, that's an action word. That's, that's an action word. We, we are not saved by our works, but because we are saved, we involve ourselves in work. Amen. Amen. We involve ourselves in work. And you ask, Pastor, I'm glad you asked. Are you listening to me? That works include the works of the Lord. Yeah, yeah. And that's what, that's what Paul was arguing, his position in that 10th verse of the second chapter of Ephesians. Turn it, when you get, turn to it, when you get a chance. For we are God's workmanship created in Christ Jesus to do what? Good works. We, 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 we've been created in Christ Jesus to do good works and that good works were prepared in advance for us. Is that whatever he has called us, whatever he has ordained us to do, is that before we assign ourselves to this work, is that God already had called us to do this great work. And I want you to write this down. I want you to write this down because I don't want you to forget it. It's good to write it down. Is that good works are natural fruit of real saving faith in our lives. We, we ought, we ought to want to produce our good works. Our works that we do in the name of Christ Jesus ought to be to the best of our ability. We ought to not half-hearted, give God. We ought to be 110%. We ought to give him more. Whatever we do in the name of Christ, when it comes down to our, our, our performance, our words, our involvement in, in kingdom building. It ought to be, we ought not attempt to do it. We ought not, you know, we ought to do it wholeheartedly. Because if our works, listen to me. If our works is not showing evidence that we are doing it for the sake of Christ, is that we're doing it in vain. Whatever we do is that we all not do it to be a show off, to get the praises, the praises of man. Our work ought to be conducive of a godly conduct. Huh? We ought to do it out of love. Love for what? Not only for God, but for people. We can't do the work of God and leave out others, leave out people. Cause, cause in reality, is that, is that the church is in, is, is, is in the business of people. That's why he left the church in the world to reach unsaved individuals. So we, so we have to ask ourselves, when it comes to our faith, do we really have real faith? What are we becoming? How are we behaving ourselves when it comes to our faith as a Christian? Cause real faith, when we talk, when we heard what I just said about fruit, is that, is that, is that, is that, is that real faith produces good fruit. Since we've been saved, since, since we have acknowledged, since, since we have confessed our sin, since we say we are saved, is that what kind of fruit have we produced that is conducive to our calling? That's good teaching right there, Pastor. And that was one of the problem that the Jews had. That's one, that's one of the, that's one of the problem that the early church had is that, is that, is that they was caught up in trying to justify their salvation without even putting in the work. And this is where, this is where James is coming along. Not, not that he's contradicting what Apostle Paul told the church in Rome and told the church in Ephesus. Paul talks about is that, is that, is that since we are saved, those of us who are saved by faith, is that, is that, is that we need to go a little bit further. And that's where James picks it up and talks about that we who are saved, we must be working. And that's what James talk about here, talking about real faith. So, so, so let's not us misunderstand what James is talking about. Paul talks about Christian faith. James teaching about Christian faith, saving faith, since we are saved. So look at, so let's look at what he talks about this dynamic faith in verses 20 through 26. Okay? Listen to what he says in verse 20. Let's start it. He said, "But are you willing to recognize, you foolish fellow, that faith without work is useless?" Okay? Listen to what he says in the next, in, in the next verse. He said, "Was not Abraham our father justified by works when he offered up eyes at his son on the altar?" We're going to get back to that. I'm just going to read the verses. He said, "You see that faith was working with his work and as a result of the work, faith was perfected. And the scripture was fulfilled which says, 'And Abraham believed God, and it was reckoned to him as righteousness, as he was called the friend of God.'" You see that a man is justified by works and not by faith alone. James using two characters in biblically, characters that, that, that is striving, putting our faith into, into work, dealing with the whole totality of man. He uses Abraham. Then look at the next verse, is that he's using Rahab, another biblical character. "In the same way was not Rahab the harlot, who was justified by works when she received the messengers and sent them out by another way." So he's talking about dynamic faith that, that includes what? Our intellect, our emotions, everything that consists of a man. And Abraham uses two, like I said, that he uses two persons in the Bible to explain his point that what is dealing with real faith at all. We know who Abraham are. Abraham was who? He was the father of the Jews. He use, when you kind of read a look at these two persons, they, they come from two different nationality. Is that Abraham was the father of the Jews. And when you kind of study about Rahab, she was considered a Gentile. Another couple difference about Abraham and Rahab. Abraham was considered a godly man. And James points out here that Rahab was, was a harlot. She was a prostitute. Are, are you listening to me? Abraham, James says that Abraham was a friend of God. And when you study about Rahab, Rahab had belonged to the enemies of God. When you study the book of Joshua, when those, when those spies came. Moses sent out those, those, those spies and he, and she hid two of them. Joshua and her. Okay? And so, so, so James, so James is, is, is making a distinct difference between the two, even though he's dealing with a man and a female. Are you seeing this? So, so you ask the question, Pastor, what is the missus there? Is that, is ready, is ready, is ready in here? Is that both of them had faith in God and acted upon that faith. What did Abraham do? Is that, is that he was willing to sacrifice what his own as son because God asked him to do it. Remember we saying a good working definition of faith is? Is that you want to really define faith, which you know, you can't really define it, but if you want something that is work, that is workable, is that faith is saying, "Lord, the answer is yes." Now, what is the question? When you look at Abraham, Abraham, even though he took his son, eyes to be sacrificed, he was not questioning God. He stepped out on faith. He said, "Me, he told, he told his servant, said, 'Me and my, me and my son is going up yonder, are going to the mountain, and God will provide himself a sacrifice.'" And even though when you look at that, is that, is that God had told him to go sacrifice his son Isaac. But Abraham put his faith into action when he said, "The Lord Himself," get there, "the Lord Himself, Himself should provide a sacrifice." And because Abraham trusted God, since Abraham obeyed God, is that Abraham was not only blessed, but he was spared. Are, are you listening to me? That, that's, that's faith. If, if, if he had have just stayed where he were and did not go up to the Mount Moriah to offer up his son Isaac as a sacrifice, it would just have been faith. It had just been dead faith. But dynamic faith causes us to act. It has to do with the total will of man. Is to put it into action. Now, think about Rahab. Think about Rahab. Rahab put her own life on the line to hide and protect these two men of God that came into Jericho. Even though the watchers had seen these two men come in that was considered spies, and they, and, and these watchers, these may want to call them troops or whatever, that saw these two men and saw that they went to the house of Rahab. You may say that Rahab lied. That's not even up for debate. That's not even up for questions. Cause if the truth be told, is that you don't know what you may do. You may say now what you may not do or what you will do, but you don't know what you may do at that moment of intensive, at that moment that it causes for a life or death situation. But the point that James is making here, he's pointing out Rahab faith. Is that, is that she had already heard about this God of Israel. Is, is that, is that she had already heard about, uh, this God of Israel. How he, how he led them out of Egypt by his mighty hand. Led them through the wilderness. How he opened up the Red Sea. She had heard about, the word had got out prior to these men, these spies getting to Jericho. How Pharaoh's army drowned, and how he took care of them forty years in the wilderness. How he fed them, how he sustained them. How he worked miracles. How their clothes didn't wear out. Oh, Lord have mercy. Oh, there, there was a lot of miracles that, that transpired, uh, 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 those forty years in, uh, in the wilderness. And one of those miracles that you don't hear too many talks about and too many is aware of, is that forty years when, when, when those babies are left out of, uh, Egypt as babies, as little children, is, is, is that, is that, that, that was, that was no, um, clothing department, uh, 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 in, in the wilderness, that, that was no Walmart. They couldn't go nowhere and do no shopping, that, that, that was no seamstress, there was nobody that was doing any alteration in the wilderness. Are y'all listening to me? Rahab had heard about the miracles of God, that those little babies that, that, that left out of Egypt, that as they grew, their clothes began to grow. That's a miracle. If they had shoes, is that, is that, if they had little baby shoes, infant shoes, is that, is that when they left Egypt, is, is that as they grow older, their shoes grew. Clothes didn't wear out, forty years, wearing the same clothes, they didn't wear out. Babies' clothes grew just as they growed. So, so you heard about how God was taking care of them. And she knew that, she, she knew that Jericho was no match when it came down to God. How he destroyed the other enemies that came up against, uh, the children of Israel. So she put her faith into action. Oh, yes, she did. So what they did, when you look at Abraham and Rahab, is that they, they didn't just say, "We believe everything we said, uh, uh, that God said," and, and they didn't do nothing. No, they didn't do that, they acted upon their faith. Why Pastor? Because they had dynamic faith. Even a prostitute was justified and considered righteous before God. Get, get, get this New Hope, even a, even a prostitute, even a harlot was justified, was considered righteous before God, because she acted upon her faith. What good is it, what good you to have a, a brand new automobile? What good is that car if you don't have a good battery? When your battery is dead, is your car is dead. Your car ain't going nowhere if that battery. What makes that car alive? I don't care how much, how good that oil may be, I don't care, you may have some, uh, Firestone, Bridgestone, uh, uh, I don't care how good them tires is, I don't care how new that car is, I don't care how old it is. If that car don't have a battery, it ain't going nowhere. What makes that, uh, car move, do what it been designed to do, is a good old battery. And that's what faith is. It works just like a battery. So real faith, dynamic faith. Is faith, when we put it into action, when we stepped out, when we step out, when we step out, when we step out, when we trust God, when we step out, when we don't have, when we, we don't have no questions about what God tells us to do. Are you listening to me, New Hope? We got too many Bible quoteers and Bible carers, but it's not even believing in what they reading and what they carrying. Again, there is nothing we can do to save ourselves apart from Jesus Christ. We can't be good enough. Nor can we work hard enough to save ourselves. And according to the word of God, we are saved by what? I'm glad you asked Pastor. By, by, by grace through faith in Jesus Christ, and that's it. Don't, 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 don't try to add anything else to it. Let me say it again, is that we are saved by grace through faith in Jesus Christ, that's it. And so let me, let me share this with you, and we're gonna let you go for today, is that faith is not belief only. Believing is just part of faith. Then, 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 then that second part comes, um, you got to, you got to, um, have a change of life. That's where that word repentance comes in. And then that third step is that cause confession. Uh, dinner with confession of our belief, we got to open up our mouth, and that's, and as I said this before, and one of our setting, that's what's wrong with the, uh, with the church today. I do believe, um, is, is, is that, uh, even here at, at the hope, is that many comes, um, for the first time that Christ even come for, uh, recommitment and rededication. And, uh, and, and we, we are guilty, we, we take him on in, and they don't have anything. As a matter of fact, I do ask them, you got anything, you ought to have something to say. You ought at least open your mouth and, and, and say, "I, I, I, I'm sorry." Confession, that, 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 I think that's where we have lost some of the power and some of the authenticity of the, of the church, is that nobody want to say, and they not, there's no confession going on. That's good teaching right there Pastor. We have to confess our belief in Jesus Christ. Even James said confession is good for the soul. Confess, uh, James went a little bit for confess our faults to one another. That, 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 that's another teaching for another setting. Is that there's nothing wrong with saying publicly, uh, uh, sometime it does do good to do it privately, is, is that, is that, "I'm sorry." Get it out, get it, get, get it off you. Confession is good for the soul. How strong will New Hope be, how strong would the body of Christ be if that be more confession? "Lord, I'm sorry." Then you got to believe in baptism, that's part, this part, this part of the salvation plan, baptism. I'm, I'm publicly, uh, uh, confession, I'm publicly acknowledging my, uh, my connection with Jesus Christ. I'm, 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 I'm true, that's where that word emerging, uh, in the water. That, the, the baptism water does not save us, the only thing that save us is the blood of Jesus Christ. Are you listening to me? But the water baptism, it, 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 it carries a meaning, it carries, it carries the, uh, the notation that I, I'm true is in agreement, I, I'm true is dying, I, I'm true is dying in my sin. Not only do I just believe in Jesus Christ, that he died, but I'm true in joining in. My old self is dying, my old nature, my old habit is dying. Keep in mind what I said earlier, water does not save us. The only thing that save us is the blood of Jesus. But what does water baptism does, it signifies, it acknowledge our, our, our relationship, our agreement, our contract with Jesus Christ. Water baptism does not save us. Cause I know a whole lot of folks, I know you all don't know, but I know, I know a whole lot of folks, uh, uh, go in water baptism. They say they go in as a devil, a devil, then they come back, even come up out even worse. So, so water, water does not save us. But, uh, but it, 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 it symbolizes, even, even you take for, for an example, good example is this communion table. You, you, you look at it more to it than just, um, just a table. Even though we use it for communion and, but, but, but you, but you kind of look at it, the, the shape of it, it kind of puts you in a mind of a tomb. And, and, and all of this has to do with the symbolism of what it represented, we're not, I know we're not dealing with the bread, and, but, but, but when you look at how this, how this table is made. And, 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 and all of this ties in with our belief and what Jesus Christ did for us, okay? And so, so when we go into the waters, you can have to look at it as a pool, when we go in, is, is, is that it symbolize that Christ, uh, he went in the tomb. And, and, uh, when he came up, he came up the third day with a newness of life. So he gave us, he gave us, he gave us that opportunity to be able to share. And so when, so, so when, so when we go into the water, not that, uh, we, 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 uh, for our denomination, as far as we don't teach about teaching, uh, about sprinkling it, but I know there's come certain instances, that a person is not, uh, humanly capable of going into water, and, and it goes back to, uh, even dinner with the Sunday School lesson, um, about the ether opening. Even though he wanted to be baptized, and, and, um, Philip baptized him. That, 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 that's, uh, thank you host, but that, 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 that has to do with our initiation unto the family of God, that's what I was looking for. That baptism initiate us, it, it's just like, it's just like any other, uh, organization or any other fraternity, uh, uh, sorority, is that you got to go through initiation. You just don't, but just become a member just because you join, you, it, it, it's some stuff you got to go through, it's a process. Even on your job, you may, you may, you may, you may, you may know the work, but you got to go through some training. You, you got to go through initiation, you got to go through, uh, 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 just a process, just, just, just keep that in mind. And so, so baptism is, is, is one of the initiation of us getting to the family of God. And if you, if you bow past that, you really have not came through the proper, the proper way. That, that's good, I know it's heavy, but that's good teaching right there. So you got to believe in the process. And that, and so that's what, that's what, that's what James was, was talking about, uh, when, when he talks about dynamic faith. And so, um, those who think that faith is, if it's just only believing, they're misunderstanding the road of baptism and how it plays into our faith. And so, um, baptism, um, it works, it's, it's important. And, um, and that we got to believe that we are not just, uh, we, we, we are not just saved by our faith. But, uh, but we have to believe in the work. Uh, I may deal with, I may pick that back up next week, cause I think I need to, we get a little bit more clarity that dealing with baptism, because, uh, uh, it works, it's got to be a part of our, um, step, the process of, um, having working, a working faith, okay? All right, let, let's, let's, let's stop right there, I think I've given us a whole lot to chew on for, 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 for a day or two, that is dealing with, uh, real faith, that dealing with a dynamic, dealing with a faith that is, that is explosive in our work, not just by, uh, by mouth, uh, not just by us reading, not just having an intellectual, uh, perspective of the word of God. We got to move from, even the demons, even, even the demons, uh, uh, have, have, know the Bible, know God, the word of God, uh, uh, and so, but they dealing on the emotionism, they dealing on the intellect. They don't, they, they don't, they don't believe it to the degree of having, uh, uh, saving faith, that Jesus can save them. Okay? And so, so James talks about, uh, having real faith that is, uh, that, that, that is, uh, uh, dynamic. And just think about that word dynamic, uh, that dealing with dynamite. Another word for dynamic is a dynamite, you ought, you ought to be explosive, explosive. Uh, you ought, you ought to make a change, it ought to, you ought to make a change in your environment. Your, your, your works ought to speak for itself, okay? All right, God bless you, and God keep you, is our prayer. Please, uh, share, uh, with, uh, another, uh, church member, another family, another friend about, uh, this, um, uh, these three kinds of faith. And I promise you, it would do you good, not only today, but in the days to come. Let us pray, God, we love you, oh how we magnify your holy name. Thank you for saving us, uh, right in the nick of time. Thank you that you saw something in each one of us that we did not see in ourselves. Thank you for your saving grace, thank you, dear God, that you have, you have begun a work in us, that it will not become complete until the day of redemption. God, we pray that you continue to give us the boldness and give us a desire to not do our will, but to do your will. Thank you for calling us, thank you for saving us. God, we just pray that you continue to lead and guide us to do the work that you've called us to do in these trying and perilous time. God, continue to undergird us, uh, do for us, God, what you did for your servant Abraham. Continue to allow us to walk by faith and not by sight. Thank you, dear God, for the friend, uh, and the person of the Holy Spirit. Thank you that we're not in this walk by ourselves, but that, that you have, uh, given us the Holy Spirit. And then God, you did tell us that you are with us, and then you said through your son Jesus, the Christ, that you also is with us in the person of the Holy Spirit, and, but in the person of the, the Son, that you said. the son, that you said, uh, I will never leave you nor forsake you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for just being with us now, and God be gonna give you all the praise, in your son Jesus' name we ask it all, amen and amen.